Being the special meeting of Folsom City Council, and I believe we have no action to report.
That is correct. For you and this mayor, no action to report.
Okay, with that, we'll adjourn the special meeting of Folsom City Council. Call ordered of the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, November 13th. The clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Here.
Gaylord.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
Morin.
Here.
And Miklos.
Here. If you'd all please rise and join me in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for keeping us company this evening. If you have a request to speak on any item of agenda, we do request that you fill out one of the blue speaker cards, and you can bring them up to the officer up here that be handed up to us. If you could do those sooner than later, that'd be great, so that way we can balance out when the items come up, how many speakers I have, and how much time allotment that we might have to change if we have too many, because I know you want to get to a decision. So with that, the clerk, please call the next item.
Your next item is agenda updates, and you have no updates this evening.
Okay, then call the next item.
Following that is business from the floor. You have four speakers tonight. First speaker is Mike Barnbaum, who will be followed by Josh Pino.
Okay, so if your names called or you're on deck, please get ready, so that way we can get right to everything. Now, remember, these are items not on the agenda, so if we look like sometimes we're deer in headlights, because by law, we're not allowed to comment, other than maybe give direction to the manager or staff. So, good evening, Mike. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor Miklos, and members of the council. Thank you, and great to be here on what hopes to be a great evening later on in your agenda. But just wanted to announce to the council, and the audience, and those viewing at home, if any of you folks are interested in learning about Paratransit Incorporated, how do they work, what is the difference between on-demand service and Consolidated Transportation Services Agency service, and all the inner workings of Paratransit, I invite everybody to the Paratransit Incorporated Board of Directors meeting. That will be on Monday, November 19th, and then not again until Wednesday, January 30th. They are located at 2501 Florin Road in South Sacramento. The cross street is Woodbine, and there you will be able to see and hear a lot about what Folsom residents currently only have available to them within three-quarters mile of a light rail station, but hopefully, a lot more would be available to them starting January 1st, depending on an action before you later in your agenda. So, I wanted to announce that. And congratulations on your victory last Tuesday.
Thanks, Mike.
Yes, looking forward to your service on the RT board, if that's the wish of the Folsom City Council for 2019.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So, maybe we can put up a link on our website for the Paratransit meetings, because I know a lot of folks were interested in the last meeting.
We can definitely do that.
Okay, thank you. Next person?
Next speaker is Josh Pino, and Josh will be followed by Calvin May.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. If you might remember, myself and my neighbors came and talked to you about the drainage saga on Bayline Circle a few months ago.
Mm-hmm.
At the time, you asked Mr. Nugent to provide you a report, so you can go forth with funding to do that. And just as a quick reminder, we asked him for an engineer's estimate on what it would cost, and he gives an estimate of $19,000 to $20,000. Since we've been trying to get an update, as far as where it stands, and when we can expect this work to be done, we have not seen any updates. Met up with Mr. Gaylord at a couple of events, and asked him to look into it. Again, we haven't seen anything or heard anything as to where it stands, and we're here to remind you that we're still there, the problem persists, and bottom line is, we're not going to go away till this is done. We want to get it done, we want to resolve this. Our neighbor just spent $20,000 resolving the drainage issues within his property to convey it out to the street, and we want this thing captured right as it comes out of his property, and take it underground. Again, Mr. Nugent has a plan, he knows what to do, we just maybe need your nudging to get it done. No pun intended.
Dave, do you have an update for this gentleman?
Well, I'm just waiting for a direction, honestly. It's, you know, I spoke with this, with the former city manager, Everett Palmer, and we felt as though, and in fact, I talked to you, Josh, about this, about having the citizens, it's a nuisance matter, it's not a drainage issue that we would normally address. So, we took it upon, or Josh, you had actually offered up getting the neighbors involved and helping offset some of those costs from the city, since this is really, it's an aesthetic issue. And, you know, it's just been kind of sitting there, waiting to hear back from Josh and his neighbors, whether or not that was going to move forward with any kind of cost offset.
Okay.
Well, I'll disagree with that, to the point that we did not agree to pay for it, or we, what I did agree to is getting the neighbors together to come over, and as a matter of fact, Mr. Marceau, who's my neighbor, is, will be here and talk to you about the same issue. We don't feel that we should pay for this. This has been going on for a while, but it's a health issue, it's not just an aesthetics issue, it's a health issue from the standpoint, I brought you pictures last time, if you remember.
Yep.
Algae builds up, it's a disaster. People have slipped there. Mr. Marceau can talk to you about the fact that his, one of his dinner guests one night slipped on the algae and fell and hurt herself. The bottom line, it's, yeah, it doesn't, it's not aesthetically pleasing, but it's also a, what do you call it, a health issue. Like I said before, this probably violates a city's NPDES permit, because it has surface drainage over the public way without any containment. Anybody that sprays their lawn or whatever, goes right in there, which goes to the river. So, it's not a health issue, it's not just an aesthetics issue.
Yeah, no, and I disagree with the last thing, because we can make discussion with people that fertilize their lawns, and they overwater their lawn, and it comes in, so I don't want to get into that. So, Dave, all I'd ask you to do is just send a memo through, maybe the city attorney's office, with the codes and this and that, and see what may or may not be done on our end, because again, if I'm hearing that you have a neighbor that's draining their drainage through channels that are overriding the proper drainage that they're supposed to handle, that is not a city issue, however, I would like, no, we're not going to get a big discussion.
No, I understand.
Because we can't. But what I'm asking for is a report back to us, through the Public Works Director and City Attorney, to the City Council and the City Manager, to see what we can or can't do.
And just to clarify, the drainage coming from the neighbor's yard is not his doing, is not his issue, it's a spring that pops up in his yard that has been, you know, that is horrific.
Okay, we'll get that in report as well.
Hundred percent, thanks.
And we'll get back to you by the end of the month.
I appreciate it.
Okay, your next speaker is Calvin May, and he will be followed by Joe Marceau.
Good evening, Calvin. How are you?
Hello, City Council members, city manager. First thing I want to talk about, I got four things here, real quickly. The train, the excursion train from the Y property, it goes by Folsom Blue Ravine and Riley, like every weekend, whistles blowing, bells clanging, and it doesn't just blow the whistle once, etc., and blows the whistle four or five times, and then it goes on to Riley, and it does the same thing again. There's people out there stopping traffic already, so they already have the traffic stopped, so there's no reason for all these air horns blowing, and the bells ringing. So, what I was wondering, I thought the train was going to be moved from the Y property to somewhere else, is that, I don't know, you can't, maybe you can't answer me right now?
We'll get a status update on it for you.
Okay. That would be great. Now, I'd like to take something out of order, because I can't stay here for the flag presentation thing. I'd like to mention something about the flag, if it's okay.
No, it has to be during the agenda item.
Can't say a thing about it?
Sorry. It's agenda, as we have to take it up at the proper time, otherwise, I'd have to let everybody else, I can't stay, take an agenda item that's not on the agenda right now, for discussion.
Okay, well, then I would like to...
What about sending us an email?
I can do that.
Or send us a note.
I'd like to thank you, Mr. Miklos, and Andy, for putting in so much time in City Council, and all the extra work you've done on other boards and councils. I really appreciate what you've done.
I thank you, Calvin, for keeping us informed of a lot of things, you know, people don't realize how involved you've been for the years I've been up here, and there's a lot of stuff that doesn't get done without you telling us, so we appreciate it.
I appreciate you.
Including happy birthday to the United States Navy.
Thank you. And also, I also want to congratulate Kerry for being re-elected, and also, I'd like to congratulate Sarah Aquino, and also Mike Kozloski for being elected, and also, it's nice to see you sitting there as city manager.
Thank you so much, Calvin.
Thanks, Cal.
Thank you, Calvin.
Thanks to Dan when you get home.
And we'll get a memo out to you shortly about the train issue.
Okay.
Excuse me, so Mark, maybe you can get, you have contact for Calvin? So, Calvin, Mark will send you an update on that.
All right.
Because he's the, what, you're the acting executive director for that, JPA or whatever now? Another hat you wear. Appreciate it. Call the next person.
I don't think he's acting, I think he's official, actually.
Yeah, actually, he is officially, that's right, he is. Well, he acts like it.
Next speaker is Joe Marceau.
I noticed the clock isn't working.
Which one?
The three-minute clock.
Well, we turned it off when he got done, so it's reset for you.
[laughing]
Yeah, we forgot to hit it for your neighbor.
I'm Josh Pino's neighbor, I'm at 178 Bayline Circle, and I've been there only 25 years. I had the house built for me. This has been an ongoing problem for basic 25 years. It really didn't start happening until D.R. Horton came in and built the condos behind us, and somehow, re-diverted a stream that hasn't stopped. And then, Cressley Homes came in and said they were going to stop it.
Would've been nice to take that water and fill up that pond.
Yeah. So, Cressley Homes didn't do anything to stop it, so I think you said it's not a city problem, and I think I agree with you on that, but it is a builder's obligation, somebody has to point out to the builder to fix the...
Well, I think that's why the Public Works Director is going to give us a good report, and again, we have to step lightly, because there's legal considerations as well, so I think...
Is that him?
That's our city attorney, and there's our Public Works Director.
Oh.
But are you on our contact list, so when the report's ready, we can send it to you as well?
No, I'm not.
Okay, if you'd like to see Mr. Nugent right there and give him your contact, I know we have it up here, but if you meet with Dave direct, and before you leave, he'll conclude you on the list as well.
But I think he qualified this as an aesthetic problem. I'm not happy with that term.
Well, that's why we'll get a full report on all the details, so we can see from the City Council standpoint, and the manager, what we may or may not be able to do.
All right.
If that worked for you, Elaine?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll get a card for you.
Thank you.
Good morning, speakers.
Okay, anybody else wishing to do business from the floor? We have no more requests from here. I don't see anybody running down, so call the next item, please.
Your next item is the consent calendar.
Okay, we do have a request to poll consent, item 6B, as in boy. Are there any other items wishing to be polled?
I'll move A and C through J.
Second.
Motion second, call the roll on those items, please.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Morin.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes, and if you read out, if you would, Madam Clerk, on 6B.
Yeah, item 6B is resolution number 10198, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number two to the agreement with Quincy Engineering for Design and Construction Administration Services for the miscellaneous water system rehab project number one, and the Folsom Zoo sewer line project, and appropriation of funds.
I requested that this be polled, because this is an amendment to the contract with Quincy Engineering, and Quincy Engineering is a client of mine, so I'll be recusing.
Okay, I'll move the item.
Second.
I got second from both of them. Take your pick. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Morin.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. I mean, literally, you guys were at the exact same time, so I'll leave it up to you, Krista. Hey, call the next item, please.
Next item is your public hearing, item 7A. This is CFD number 18, Folsom Plan Area, area-wide improvements and services. You have two resolutions before you tonight, resolution number 10208, this is a resolution calling a special mail ballot election related to change proceedings. You have a resolution number 10209, this is a resolution of change relating to CFD number 18. And last, you have ordinance number 1289, this is an ordinance levying a special tax for fiscal year 2019-20 and following years, and this ordinance is before you for first reading and introduction.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm John Donahue, Deputy Treasurer. And surprisingly, I got that up there.
Jim trained you well.
Yeah. Anyway, tonight, we're here to conduct a public hearing and election regarding an amendment to CFD number 18. A brief look back will show us that CFD 18 was formed in December of 2015. At that time, a special tax was authorized to finance the acquisition and construction of certain public facilities, and to fund certain public services. Here's a map of CFD 18, for those that are unfamiliar. The northern border would be Highway 50, the southern one, White Rock Road, the westernmost, Prairie City Road, and easternmost, El Dorado, the El Dorado County line. These are the same borders as the plan area generally. On October 9th, 2018, the City Council approved the resolution of consideration to amend CFD 18, so that we may authorize additional services, and amend the rate and method of apportionment, and set a place and time for this public hearing. The amended RMA would authorize additional services, specifically, certain transportation demand management and air quality services, also known as the TDM services. These TDM services are required as part of the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan Operational Air Quality Mitigation Plan. With this amendment, we are creating an additional special tax category, the revenue of which will be used to satisfy the mitigation measure related to and required by the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District. The district has confirmed the amendment to the RMA will satisfy this mitigation measure. The mitigation measure states that the Plan Area shall apply for permanent membership in the 50 corridor TMA. If the 50 corridor TMA is dissolved, the TDM services special tax revenue would remain to be used to fund TDM services at that point, whether it be performed by the city, contracted out, or if another TMA was formed. At full build-out, the TDM services special tax is anticipated to generate about $350,000 The TDM services special tax for 2018-19 is proposed at $25 per EDU. The EDUs would be assigned to the various product types, as shown on the screen, non-residential parcels would be assigned 15 EDUs per acre. TDM services special tax rate will increase annually by the June annualized change in CPI for all urban customers in the Bay Area, and due to a question last time, it is the only CPI index for Northern California.
Thanks for the reminder. He was listening.
The overall property tax burden will not substantially change due to this amendment, and remains within policy. It's estimated that the increase in the property tax burden would be one to two-hundredths of a percent with this amendment. So with that, the staff would recommend that the City Council conduct the public hearing after this presentation, approve the two resolutions listed, and conduct the first reading of the ordinance. Unless there are any questions, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it over to you to conduct the public hearing.
Any questions at this point in time? Okay, so, thank you, stand by if we need you. So, it's now appropriate for me to open the public hearing to give consideration to altering the types of authorized services to be financed for the city's Community Facilities District 18, Folsom Plan Area, area-wide improvements and services, the district, and adding a category of special tax to pay for such services within the district. So therefore, Madam Clerk, has noticed that this hearing has been given in accordance with the political law, applicable law?
Yes, as required by the Belarus Community Facilities Act, and by prior resolution of this council. Notice of this hearing was published once in the Folsom Telegraph on November 1, 2018, and notice was mailed to the landowners within the district on October 22, 2018.
Okay, so the public hearing is now officially open. We will now receive comments and questions on any protests from any interested persons. When all comments have been received, the public hearing will be closed. The floor is now open for testimony from members of the public. Do we have any requests to speak at this time?
You have no requests to speak.
Anybody wishing to come forward, this is, any interested persons or taxpayers may approach the podium and testify at this time orally, or you can bring us in writing for or against the affirmation items. See, nobody running down. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Do you have any questions from my colleagues at this point? Okay, Madam Clerk, does there exist a majority protest against the affirmation items?
No written protests have been received from the landowners within the district, therefore, a majority protest does not exist.
Okay, so consideration of, consideration of resolutions calling for elections, so at this time, because a majority protest does not exist, it is appropriate for the City Council to consider a resolution to call a special election within the district. So this time, we'll consider our resolution number 10, 10208. So I need a motion second for that item, please.
So moved.
Second.
You got a motion second, it's call the roll on that item.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Morin.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. And for those in the audience who wonder why I read, there's a very specific process, it has to be followed to the letter, I think there's no way I can memorize all this, so bear with me as I read it, so...
Even though we know Krista could.
Yeah, probably, yeah. The old gray guy over here, he's getting, anyway. Pursuant to resolution number 10208, the election for alternate types of authorized services to be financed for the district, and adding a category of special tax to pay for such services within the district is now open, and the city clerk may conduct the election. So Madam Clerk, have you received the ballot from each landowner within the district?
I have received the ballots, and finding that all ballots in the election have been submitted, I do declare the election closed.
Clerk, could the clerk please proceed to canvas the ballots?
I have completed the canvas of the ballots for the special election related to change proceedings in the district, held today, November 13, 2018. The canvas was as follows. 3,435 votes were cast in support of the measure, and zero votes were cast in opposition to the measure. Therefore, the measure was approved with a 100% vote in favor.
Okay, so I need you to sign the certificate of election results, which will be done after we finish everything else. So now, we consider a resolution of change, so I need the City Council to, a motion to approve or deny 10209 resolution of change. I'll move it.
So moved.
Okay, she'll move on second. Any questions on that item? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Morin.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes, and then we'll do the introduction, first reading of ordinance levying special tax, so therefore, the City Council needs to consider ordinance number 1289, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Morin.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes, thank you for bearing with my reading skills. So, we'll move on to the next item, please.
This takes us to old business item 8A. This is direction to staff regarding proposal for a new city flag. Christine Brainard is presenting.
Good evening, Christine.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Christine Brainard. I'm your communications manager in the city manager's office. Tonight's staff is seeking direction from the City Council regarding proposals for a new city flag. At your last City Council meeting on October 23rd, the City Council received a presentation about a proposed new city flag by the two Vista de Lago High School students. As the students talked about in their presentation, the purpose of a city flag is to represent the city of Folsom's history and community, encourage city pride, promote unity, and invoke a sense of place, and provide a recognizable symbol for the city. The new flag would replace the existing City of Folsom flag, which is pictured here on this slide. The flag that the students presented is pictured here. Tonight, the city staff is seeking council direction on five proposals for the city flag. The first would be to select the proposed flag by the Vista de Lago High School students. The second proposal would be the Arts and, City of Folsom Arts and Cultural Commission, receive and evaluate submittals from city residents, and make a recommendation to the City Council at a future City Council meeting. The third option is to have city staff solicit submittals from city residents, and present all submissions to the Folsom City Council at a future City Council meeting. The fourth option would be to designate another method to receive public submittals, and present the submissions to the City Council at a future meeting. And the fifth option, which was not included in your staff report, but would be to keep the current city flag. So that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Questions for Christine? Okay, do we have any speakers on this item?
You have two speakers of Sierra Stewart and Sienna Hansen.
And we'll point out, these are the ladies from Vista that took this project on their own, and so, congratulations again, I think you did an awesome job on the history, the research, and all the stuff that goes along with the flag, so, welcome back, ladies.
Thank you very much. As you've mentioned, Mayor, the past couple months, Sienna and I have spent conducting research on flags, and brainstorming, and designing this flag that you've seen tonight, and...
Hang on one second. Christine, can we put the flag back up? Because what I'd like you to do, if you could, ladies, is again, go through what the flag represented when you came up with this one, because a lot of people weren't aware of it, and so I think they should hear it again.
Okay, so, the gold stripe that runs through the flag is symbolic of the Gold Rush, because it was a huge part and a huge element of our city's history, and our state's history. And if you'll notice, the stripe doesn't run in one fluid line across the flag, it overlaps, but it meets in the middle, and that's representative of the convergence of past and present, and the Gold Rush that we're having still today, because in Folsom, we are still having, we're still thriving, and with innovation and technology, we are still a booming city, and so, we wanted to have that in our flag. And additionally, the center point in the flag, do you want to talk about that part?
It comes to a center in the middle of the flag.
Real loud or get closer. There you go.
It comes to the middle in front of the flag to represent the center point that Folsom is. It's close to San Francisco, and Sacramento, and Lake Tahoe now, and in past history, it was also a center point for the Gold Rush, and for our community in California. It also represents the diversity that's coming together, with so much culture, with Native American tribes, with people coming from other countries for work, and a safe place to live.
Right, so, the black triangles on the flag are representative of our Folsom prison, because it was a huge part of our history, and it's still a huge part of our community today. The Folsom prison produces license plates, they refurbish old bikes for kids in need, and they train Canaan companions there, and we wanted to have that in our flag, because it's a pivotal point of our community, and it always has been. And the Folsom prison is actually gray, but we wanted to have it black in the flag to represent Johnny Cash, because he's the man in black, and he's the one that really put our city on the map. And finally, the blue in the flag is there to represent the waters of Folsom, the river, the lake, and the recreational centers that those create for our city, and with the lake comes the dam and its hydroelectric energy. And so, we felt that these were really the pillars of Folsom, and the things that made our community great, and the things that made us unique. So, in our research on this flag, we learned a lot of things that we didn't know to start with, and a lot of people ask us why we didn't put words on the flag, or why there aren't pictures on it, and we really wanted the flag to be simple, and we wanted it to have meaningful symbolism in it that could speak to the great things in our city. So, since the last council meeting, we have received a huge response from the community, and we're pleasantly surprised with how much people care about the flag. Some people are fully in support of this flag, and I'm sure there are people that are wholly against this flag, but that's okay, because it means that they care, and it means against this flag, but that's okay because it means that they care, and it means that they want the emblems of our city to be important to them and that they want it to be the best it can be.
Well, we understand that, like, well, we believe this is the best flag for Folsom, and we believe we've incorporated all the necessary parts to a flag, the symbolism and the meaning behind it. We fully understand that it's so important to have our community be involved because we created this flag for our community. If the council does decide to have some kind of competition, we want people who will be involved in that to seem... Put the same kind of work that we put into it and have the same requirements that we did, because we want others to have the same amount of passion and respect for a flag that we do. We also would like the council to require them to present to you guys so that you can see their meaning behind it, see their research, and be able to compare it with each other in the parts of a flag that matter most, which is the symbolism and the meaning behind it. At the end of the day, we want Folsom to have the best flag possible, and we're really thankful that you're here to make that possible. Thank you.
Any questions of the ladies?
Thank you for all of your hard work and for the respectful manner in which you presented that tonight.
Thank you.
Future councilmembers.
And I got to say, just hearing all the research that you put into about what... There's actually flag etiquette about what should and should not be on the flag. That's why you don't see words, you don't see city seals, city emblems, choo-choo trains, any of that kind of stuff. So I agree with you on the criteria, because again, if we're going to look at truly a city flag that's symbolic of City of Folsom, I agree, they need to follow the criteria of what a flag should be, not what it shouldn't be. So I just... I can't say enough of how proud I am of you two ladies taking this on, bringing it to our attention, and just the time and energies and research you put in is just... I'm hoping the rest of our students will follow your lead. It's just unbelievable that you took this on the way you did, and with such... Like she said, with such professionalism, such encouragement, such enthusiasm, so we'll see how it comes out.
Thank you.
Okay, so who wants to lead off with this one? I'm happy to if nobody else wants to take the lead. So I believe... I'm sorry, did you want?
Oh, no.
So I believe in... I see Mr. Holderness, one of my colleagues at the time, and maybe you can help answer the question, but I know when that flag that we currently have came forward, I don't believe we did a competition. It was brought forward by then-Mayor Fayette. He did do some research, and he wanted to honor mostly our train heritage at the time because we were actually in the process of figuring out where the turntable was and looking at heritage, so... And I think it's fine, it was certainly appropriate at the time. My opinion is, and this is just strictly me, I don't... I'm not in favor of a competition. I had two young ladies approach me as the mayor on a time I visited Vista High School. They had this idea. No one else has come forward in 11 or 12 years since we adopted, if not longer, the other flag, and I quite frankly am very pleased with the design, or the symbolism it represents, and I certainly... In my opinion, they deserve a vote from the City Council for this flag and not reward somebody else that's going to capture their idea, their research, and this and that, because again, nobody else has ever come forward to request change in our flag, and they did it with professionalism, with research. I mean, I can go on and on as I did the last meeting. So my request is, and you know, again, I'll even throw it as a motion, you guys can jump me if you want, but I would move to accept this as our new city flag and reward the ladies for their hard work, and I think the City of Folsom would be extremely proud of this flag. Yep.
I would second that. I think, you know, your leadership and your passion on bringing this forward, and you know, I echo everything Mayor Miklos just said about it. I think it represents a lot to you, number one, and I think, you know, I said it prior when I look at this, not only is the list of everything you mentioned on it, but when I look at it, I think of other things, and it gets me thinking about why I love Folsom, too. I love the aspect that it came out of Vista. You know, that you guys are putting your stamp on the map, so I 100 percent agree, and I would second that motion, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I don't have any problem. You know, one of the nice things about a decision like this is in the staff report, it says fiscal impact negligible, so that's always... That's always nice. And... But I did see an earlier version of this that you guys had that had "Go Vista" on here, so I decided to take that off, huh? But no, all kidding aside, you know, feel the same as the comments that my colleagues already shared, so appreciate your hard work and, you know, happy to support the mayor's motion.
Carrie, Ernie? The only comment that I'll make, which is not... Please don't take offense to this. This is just reminding me of when we had the whole issue about the bridge namings, and that did turn into a competition, so I'm, you know, I can go either way on this. But I do want to repeat what I said at the last council meeting. The amount of effort and research that you girls put into this is absolutely amazing, and I hope that your... The rest of the student body at Vista is paying attention to what you guys did. Very proud of you.
Yeah, I'm not going to be the grudge at the time, but I think you're going to have to give me a handout to carry around, because if anybody asks me to explain this map or this flag, I'm not going to be able to do it. Okay, well, yeah, Folsom, they say, what does it stand for? I know what Folsom in my mind stands for, but what you just described today was pretty exotic, and I don't know, I would not vote against it, but I do believe that a lot of times, something visual should be pretty much self-explanatory. This is not, okay? But then again, you kids are getting so smart nowadays that older folks have got to adjust. And... But I say, you may have to come up and give this council a handout to go along with this flag, because I'm not about to try to explain it like you did. But as the mayor said, your outstanding effort and your smart in doing it and your research, which is very important for your future, it's overwhelming and it's appreciated, so I'm pretty sure as I lead off the vote, that there'd be a positive vote. Now, if I wasn't that convinced how good you did, I would refer it to the Arts and Culture Commission, just for another review, but I think you've done a lot of research, and I can't see the Arts and Culture Commission looking different than what the five of us have said so far, so I'll see when they call the vote, I'll see what I do.
We got a motion second. Call roll, please, for option one.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Morin.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Congratulations, ladies.
Now, Betsy Ross, number one, and Betsy Ross, number two, can you please go home and sew this flag?
So here's what we're going to do. So when the first flag is ready, hopefully sooner and later, my colleagues and I would like to come out to Vista High School and in front of your student body, with you present, present this flag to the student body and officially make it the city flag. That's what we'd like to do. So let's give them a round of applause again. You ladies are awesome. Your flag. I love those kind of meetings. Thanks, ladies. Go home and celebrate.
Mayor, could I...
After you do your homework.
Mayor, could I have 30 seconds for a hug break?
Absolutely.
We've instantly become a kinder, gentler Folsom.
City managers get away with everything.
This is one of those special moments. I know we've had it a lot over our years, but this, to me, is extremely significant. It proves again, we have young people that have personal drive and energy and ambition, and took something to this on your own. I am so glad that we actually got to meet in that class that afternoon. This wouldn't have happened, so thank you. So with that, anticlimactically or not, let's move on to the next item.
Your next item is Old Business Item 8B. This is a Resolution Number 10195, Resolution Approving Annexation Agreement with the Sacramento Regional Transit District.
Hey, Mr. Nugent, hard act to follow, huh?
Yeah, gee, thanks. That's all good.
We'll contact you, ladies.
Good evening, Mayor Miklos, members of the City Council, Dave Nugent, your Public Works Director. So we are here again tonight for a resolution authorizing the City of Folsom stage line to be annexed to the Sacramento Regional Transit. As you recall, at our last meeting in October, this item came before you, and we had a number of public commenters and mostly dialer ride customers that were concerned with the proposed annexation and how it would affect them for their dialer ride services. We were directed to kind of take it back and meet with SACRT to address those concerns and meet with those interested parties to see what answers we could give them that would alleviate their concerns. On October 30th, SACRT held a second open house at the Culture Senior Center next door, and had their entire executive management team led by Mr. Henry Lee, and they also included the CEO of Paratransit to answer any questions regarding paratransit, since there was a lot of confusion at the time regarding the differences between the dialer ride and the paratransit services. As I said, there were many, many questions posed to SACRT and paratransit, and to my understanding and what I was at that meeting and attended, I believe every single answer that was given alleviated all the concerns from those that posed the questions. So with that, I'd like to ask Henry Lee to come up and go over what was discussed at the meeting and his future ideas of forming the Transition Citizen Task Force to help oversee the transition team with RT and the city staff. So Henry?
Thank you for coming out again.
You're welcome. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and a member of the council. Again, you know, thank you for your continued consideration of this important regionalism initiative. When we were here three weeks ago, we heard loud and clear from a fair of the constituents about importance in preserving the dialer ride service and improving the paratransit service. As a result of those comments, the City of Folsom Management Team led by City Manager and RT team immediately talked to them individually and also host another open house with those individuals to discuss their concerns and issues they had. In the meantime, we have talked to almost everyone of those drivers to discuss their individual needs, and yesterday, we sent all the answers to those, you know, individuals about their questions and issues. These meetings were very productive, and I'm very grateful for the great collaboration, teamwork, and invaluable advice from these wonderful individuals, those people such as, you know, Ms. Margie Donovan, Mr. Brian Lindy, Mr. Will Campton, and Mr. Bob Holderness, and many others. We will also be, you know, we are actually right now forming a task force with these community advocates and also with our city management, you know, team, to ensure that the residents of Folsom will have a direct, special line of communication with us and with myself, and also to ensure the future issues will be addressed immediately or timely, and also the transition of service will be as smooth as possible. I'm looking forward to working with the Citizen Task Force to address any concerns, and more importantly, to use them as a sounding board in the future. Also, since last meeting, you know, City Manager, Ms. Anderson and I have had opportunities to sit down with a fair of members of the council. I greatly appreciate the chances with our policy decision makers to chat on this important regional initiative, thanks to your Vice Mayor, thanks to Councilmember Gaylord. As I briefly touched on last time, there are a number of points, very simple points, I would like to clarify again. So first, overall service levels, especially the dialer ride services, will remain unchanged or otherwise improved. So there's only two options, no change or improve. Secondly, the city will have a greater voice on SACRT board, so Folsom's interest will be well taken care of in SACRT board. Thirdly, all employees will be offered employment with similar or better compensations and benefit, meaning their let, take-home pay will be the same or better. Fourth, the region will be more competitive for the state and the federal grants. Another benefit is the monthly student's pass will drop from $50 to $20, which is what RT's, you know, policy, fair policy. And lastly, but not least, expand direct regional paratransit service without transfers will be at without current city boundary constraints, so you don't have to transfer, you know, in the middle. These efforts will help bring additional benefit, not just to the great City of Folsom, but to the entire Sacramento region, especially east side of the region. Again, you know, we are very grateful for this great regional partnership, and we are willing to... We're committed to work with City of Folsom to bring this region to the next level. To show the commitment and the leadership of this important regional initiative, SACRT Board Chair and County Supervisor Patrick Kennedy is here to share a fair of his thoughts.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's good to be here. I can tell you, I'm not only the Chair of RT, but I'm a member of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, and we have a terrible flag.
Why don't you get ahold of the girls at Vista?
Yeah, I gave them my card. But that being said, you know, if you've followed RT over the last several years, I think that you would agree that there's been a significant turnaround in how the organization operates, and it's already bearing fruit in higher ridership and just a real feeling that Sacramento RT is now clean, safe, and convenient.
The change, Patrick, has been cataclysmic in a good way.
Thank you, thank you, and we're very, very proud of that, and we will continue to strive for that same ethos here in Folsom. You have the board's full commitment to come into the fold and allow us to provide services that are second to none anywhere in the region, so I just wanted to come here really to just say that, that we are fully committed to working with Folsom and having you as a bigger part of RT than you currently are. The other thing I want to say is just a personal note from the RT board, and that's to thank you. Thank you for, over the years, many years, that you have allowed us to benefit from the great vision, leadership, and commitment of Andy Morin, and Andy's been a fantastic member of the RT board, and Andy, you will be greatly missed. So thank you very much. This is a momentous occasion, not just for Folsom, for RT, and for the entire region, and I will leave without my huggable moment.
Patrick, as you're leaving, I was kind of made a comment to last time, or last meeting, it's funny how... And Patrick's also a colleague of mine on SECOG, the area council governments.
And the STA and a lot of other things.
It's funny how we've gone full circle with the Connect Card to beat one card now. We spent a lot of years on that, so I agree with you, momentous occasion, hopefully this evening.
And thanks for coming out tonight, Patrick.
Any other people you'd like to bring, otherwise, we do have some requests to speak. Okay, we'll go ahead and call those requests.
Okay, your first speaker tonight will be Bob Holderness. Bob will be followed by Mike Barnbaum.
Good evening, Bob.
Mr. Mayor and members, Robert G. Holderness, Folsom resident. I'm speaking tonight in favor of the annexation into RT, and I would do that from a little bit different perspective than what's been expressed to this point. Folsom historically has always been a crossroads, which means we get other people's traffic. Back in the days of the Indians, they crossed here because the river was narrow. During the Gold Rush, we had more stagecoach lines than any city in the western United States at one point before the railroad, because the railroad was narrow. So nowadays, we get the traffic from Placer County to come into our city down Folsom Boulevard. We get the traffic from Eldorado County to come into our city by Natoma Street, by Blue Ravine Road, by Iron Point Road, by Highway 50, and we, by the same token, use all those roads for ourselves. The problem is, our road system is constrained. We... There are not enough lanes available on the future for Highway 50. We don't have enough lanes to add to accommodate the growth in Placer or Eldorado County, not to mention our own growth on Folsom Boulevard, Iron Point Road, Blue Ravine, Natoma Street, et cetera. So we need rail. God and Theodore Judah blessed us with a rail system that was built back in 1856. God and Theodore Judah blessed us with a rail system that was built back in 1856, and we put it to work in the early 2000s when RT came to town with their light rail system. And we need to advance that and improve it and make it work better for our residents so they'll have adequate transportation in the long run. Best way to do that, in my humble opinion, is by annexation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Bob. I'm sorry, call the next person.
Next speaker.
I was enthralled by Bob, I was waiting for the John Adams speech.
Next speaker is Mike Barnbaum. Mike will be followed by Margie Donovan.
Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, thank you. Great to be back here again, considering the annexation of the city of Folsom into the Sacramento Regional Transit District. As was mentioned, yes, it was a very productive community open house on October 30th at the Senior Center. A lot of the concerns and questions raised at the past council meeting came up again in a more open dialogue and transparent forum, and all parties felt, leaving that open house, that a lot of the concerns expressed at the past council meeting were addressed and alleviated, and people are very much relieved that had testified at the last council meeting entering tonight's council meeting to move this item and SACRTI forward into the future. I echo the comments of Robert G. Holderness, your previous speaker, and want to let you know that you're not the only one going through this exercise right now. There was a vote last night, 96 votes, to conditionally approve the annexation of your neighbors in the city of Citrus Heights into the Sacramento Regional Transit District. That process is hoped to be formalized and final one month from tonight, and that will be Thursday, December 13th, in the Citrus Heights City Council chambers before their governing body. So we're moving forward with that. The route optimization study to reimagine the entire bus and RT network, and of course, the initiatives here in Folsom to improve night and weekend service that began on Father's Day 2018. Most of the rest of the system on weekends will go to every 15 minutes, starting Sunday, January 6th, and the, thanks to Ecos and the lawsuits settled, construction could soon begin, thanks in large part also to the defeat of Proposition 6, which hadn't been mentioned yet tonight. That transportation money will continue to be flowing, and being one whole district will benefit Folsom, RT, and the entire region. I can't thank everyone enough that attended the open house, and Andy, your hard work for the years you've had on the board to bring this to fruition before the new council starts December 10th. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate, appreciate all your hard work and staying involved. You've been doing it a long time, and it's nice to see rewards coming forward now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you call the next speaker, please?
Next speaker is Margie Donovan, and Margie will be followed by Barbara Leary.
Good evening, Mr. Miklos and City Council members. I changed my name tonight.
We keep getting reminded.
I am a proud resident of this city, and I couldn't be more prouder, standing here tonight and stating that I support the annexation. I am moved deeply by the work of the city council, by RT's management team, and by our city manager and other city members, it's city employees, excuse me. When I first moved here, I heard this was going to happen, and we kept dreading it and dreading it 10 years ago, every driver, every passenger, and now it's happening, and I'm no longer dreading it. I thank Mr. Lee and his staff for the second meeting we had last Tuesday. It answered all of our questions. There was a lot of confusion prior to that, and I fully and wholeheartedly support this motion moving forward. I want to clarify one thing and state one concern. I've heard a number of comments made, and for clarification, dial-a-ride will stay the same, RT paratransit will stay the same, and that means if you do not live within three-quarters of a mile of a light rail station, you will have to make the transfer. Everything is staying the same. There is no direct RT service in the Folsom, paratransit service in the Folsom unless you live near a light rail station, as I do. So I want to put that rumor that's been going around to rest. Secondly, I just want to express a concern, and I know in our task force that we will address this. Unfortunately, last Thursday, I did not have a paratransit ride that was scheduled to take me to Greyhound to go up and watch my kids so my son can go to his Marine Corps ball. And my ride did not show up. We've done a lot of homework, paratransit has, and for some reason, there's no history of that call. Fortunately, my partner, Robert Upham, was able to grab me, and we had an hour to make the bus, and we made it. I hope that never happens again. If Robert was not my partner, I would have been stuck. I looked at Lyft, it was almost a $60 ride. Can't afford it, sorry. So I hope that in our task force that will continue to look at things like this that can happen in this city. I've had it happen in this city one time, and that's my only concern, but I feel really assured that with this task force that Mr. Lee and his administrative assistant, Christopher, we will address these issues. I encourage all of you to please vote yes. Thank you.
Margie, thank you for all your involvement and continued involvement. We couldn't have gotten there without your help as well.
Thank you.
Okay, call the next person, please.
Your next speaker tonight is Barbara Leary.
Good evening, Barbara.
Good evening. I'm here as a resident, a light rail user, a fan of public transit, and I've also been the Sierra Club representative to the transportation committees that have met in Sacramento with Mr. Lee and with Mr. Kennedy in the past. Mr. Kennedy failed to share his pictures of himself riding light rail for the RT Challenge last month on Facebook, but he's a regular user as well. And I just want to support the council in moving forward with this annexation. I think it's important for us to improve our public transportation system. Many people have already covered the problems with traffic on Highway 50, and it's actually been a boon to this town to be able to use light rail to get to Sacramento, especially during high-traffic times. The safety has improved, the public communication and the services in the region have improved since Mr. Lee has taken over the system. I'm confident that he will continue to work with the public and continue to provide excellent, actually even better service than we currently have here in Folsom. So I will end my statements with that discussion. Thank you very much.
Hard work, Barbara. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
You have no more requests to speak.
Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Okay, CNN will go ahead and close the public hearing, and...
I'd like to move Resolution 10195.
All second. I just, yeah, I want to do one real quick. One thing I want to add, first of all, I want to say thank you to, where's Henry? Where'd he go? Where's he hiding? There he is. I specifically want to thank you for the student pass. Going to $20, that really, really helps them out, and so when you're doing your rate optimization study, knowing that some of the high schools are short on parking, if we could kind of look at that optimization study to where the buses, the public buses, or have a transit stop very close to both high schools, that would really, really help the situation, especially at Vista as being the worst right now. So if you can include that, I'd really appreciate it, but I can't thank you enough for allowing it to be affordable for students. That is a tremendous opportunity. I want to thank you again as well, taking, you know, all the concerns out of our dial-a-ride folks, certainly working with paratransit, making a commitment that we'll try to bridge that gap where we have some issues, if you will, and I think the task force is the perfect way to solve those issues and keep you well informed. So I just want to say, at least on behalf of myself and this community, I really appreciate what you've done for RT, what you've done for the region, what you certainly are doing for this community, and I look forward to this annexation vote coming up here shortly.
And I'm just going to echo Steve's comments. As I've said to you, both publicly and privately, I'm thrilled to see what you and your colleagues at RT have managed to accomplish in a relatively short time period. As I said earlier, cataclysmic is probably too small a word, and I mean that sincerely with all of the improvements that RT's made. As I sat here 20 years ago, every time a certain member of the Sacramento City Council would mention Folsom being annexed into RT, I would simply laugh. I'm really, really happy that this is happening, and I have confidence, full confidence, in you and your staff that this is going to, this is going to be a good thing for the city of Folsom. And I am now giving you a virtual hug.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to point out that the last meeting when we had the discussion, and I asked the mayor to delay it so that we can have a little bit more discussion. I think it proves that it's no problem to delay, to be sure, okay? I did attend the meeting on October 30th, and I was impressed with the level of executives from the transit group that was at that meeting. It was very high, and appreciated that. I know Margie was there and all the rest that had some concerns. I just, and then we follow up with a luncheon, yourself and the city manager. I'm convinced that we're going to do the right thing. And again, I, on behalf of myself and probably the rest of the group, thank you very much.
Roger, anything?
Yeah, I'll say the same thing. I mean, you took the time out, and I never jump into a partnership when there's issues on the table and then say, we'll fix it after, but you and your staff certainly stepped up and, you know, addressed everyone's concerns, and I got several emails after the fact from folks expressing their gratefulness for you to do that as well. So I appreciate that, and I look forward to the vote. Thank you.
Mr. Morin.
Yeah, and just, I also appreciated the, you know, just the extra time that we took, and I appreciated the concerns that Roger and Ernie shared at the last meeting, and I was very confident that we could address those concerns. You know, I work with the regional transit staff and the Board of Directors frequently, and I know the quality that we work with, excuse me, but I know others don't, haven't had that luxury to, you know, understand the acumen that exists within regional transit these days. So I've known this is the right thing, you know, when we started to consider this, you know, probably half a year or a year ago. So I just want to share my thanks with Elaine, and, you know, taking the lead with our staff on this side, and then Henry, your staff, and Patrick, thanks for coming out today and sharing your expertise and your humor. You know, I've had the privilege of working with Patrick for a number of years now, and his service on the regional transit board is certainly appreciated, so thank you, Patrick. And with that, you know, again, this'll, actually, one last thing, is the folks who came up here, Marjorie and others who came up here and expressed those concerns, and as I mentioned at the meeting last time, I would have been disappointed if those concerns existed and people hadn't come forward. So thanks for doing that, and, you know, this task force will be an important piece of this going forward. And I just want to assure the people involved in that task force, you know, you had a very perfect example of how important solving and building transit solutions in this region is when we had that second meeting, and you saw the commitment from regional transit staff at that meeting. That wasn't just one thing they did. They do that all the time when there are problems, you know, anywhere in the region. So they are problem solvers and transit builders, so, you know, really look forward to a bright, bright transit future here in Folsom. And as was mentioned, Citrus Heights will be considering this in about a month, and I am certain that Elk Grove will follow a few months after that and, you know, truly bring transit as a regional agency, and as Henry has shared many times, the, you know, just kind of the scale that that brings to improving the system even more going forward. So thanks to everybody for working hard to make this happen. And with that, I'll save the rest of my voice for probably no other comments this evening, so.
Okay, we do have a motion to second, so unless there's further discussion up here, I'm going to call for the vote. Call the rule, please.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Morin?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes. So, congratulations. Thank you again, ladies, for all your hard, Margie, again, thank you, thank you, thanks for all your hard work, comments, and let's keep it rolling. Henry, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
On behalf of the city of Folsom, thank you.
Thanks, Henry.
Okay, call the next item, please.
Your next item is 8C. This is Resolution Number 10205, a resolution appointing the Historic District Parking Solutions Ad Hoc Committee.
Good evening.
Who's presenting this one, Dave?
Dave, New Jersey. It's me again.
Hi, Dave.
So the third one from our last council meeting, October 23rd, is back before you again tonight. With the direction received...
Is that a three-peat, Dave?
It is a three-peat, or a hat-trick, as we like to say.
We'll go to hat-trick.
With the direction received from the City Council, the public workshop on October 23rd, staff has prepared a resolution for the City Council to approve the establishment of the Historic District Parking Solutions Ad Hoc Committee. The committee will be advisory-only and will be tasked with meeting with residents and business owners and other stakeholders periodically to discuss parking constraints and look for some solutions, exploring the solutions and concerns of the residential portions of the historic district, and ultimately making a report and recommendations to your council no later than one year from today, November 12th. As outlined in the resolution, are guidelines for the creation of the Ad Hoc Committee, and is up to your council to establish some of the details, specifically the number of individuals to be on the committee and the manner of selecting those representatives to serve on the committee, and the frequency of meetings if you so desire, and any other goals and objectives you wish to include them to undertake as part of the committee. And with that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Questions for Dave before we start to chat?
Comments?
Yeah, go ahead, Ernie, if you want to start.
Reading the staff report, I was a little bit concerned in the 10 years I'm coming to close here shortly. I wanted to see more positive, quick reaction. The thing that turned my head a little bit was the one-year report, and I know what you meant to do, but in my mind, I said, I don't want to wait one year for anything.
Yeah, I think the intent of that, it was the ad hoc is to be formed for no longer than a year.
Yeah, right.
Obviously, there can be multiple meetings and recommendations throughout that year.
But after a year, it has to be dissolved, as we say.
Yeah, correct. But, which means the urgency of what we heard at the last meeting by both the business and the residents' vote, that we have to have, do a good job of setting this up, being aggressive to start making milestones, okay, and to think out of the box, especially if we're talking about a budget to put up another parking structure, which I think is imperative. But there's a lot of other things that we can do shortly, and one thing that does come to my mind, which this committee should be one of the first things they do, is we do in the Park and Rec Department with the Joint Use Program that we have with the school district, where we put dark days, which means they are not available for recreation, they're only available for school issues. And what that does, it allows the educators to educate and Park and Rec to be able to schedule. And I think we have to do the same thing with the residents. It's time that we take real deep concern in giving the quality of life of certain days back to the residents, and, but at the same time, as I said last time, we have to consider the economic value of the businesses down there and keep them viable so that they continue, okay? So somewhere in between, we'll have to, the committee should work very hard to do that. And as I expressed to the city manager earlier today in our review, I think we'll have to come up and make this a, I'll just draw one thing I thought of, okay? It's some kind of percentage which includes the chamber, includes the Historic Business District, and it includes the people... District, and it includes the people, I guess it's west of Riley, and likewise, north or east of Riley, rather, so that everybody's, and then I think we have to give some consideration to the people down in the preserve. Okay? And the final ones that we have to consider is the ones that are outside the immediate area of Sutter Street, because likewise, at times, they're affected. So I'm just, my pitch to my colleagues is that we move with all haste to get this committee established, get the proper representation, and get to work in the first of the year. And I'm sure this, of course, there's only one left of the group that have made major contributions over the years, such as the bridges. That doesn't happen overnight. That was tremendous, and I know you, Dave, probably be growing that. But we can do it, and will depend on Kerry to give us the help we need to move. And even if it's small things, like the controlling the number of dates that we have available for projects or events down there, without limiting the viability of our businesses to survive. So that's all I'm gonna say, is I think, I think we just wanna move fast and move positive, and there'll be stops, and then there'll be goes, and then we just peace out. I just think that has to be done. And I think we do, I was talking to the city manager, she indicated that there was no council representation, per se, on the revitalization of the Old Town. I would, I could maybe not have that completely, but that, I'll defer to the old timers up here, because-
Did I just become the oldest one?
Yes, you are. Sure. Well, I'm, it's amazing, I can serve 10 years and be a rookie, okay? But I believe we do have to make progress, and I think the group that we're gonna have come January will pick up where the group that had made some major, major accomplishments in the past.
Okay.
Kerry?
With regard to council members, based on my experience with other ad hoc committees that we've had over the course of the last 20 years, we've not had council members serve on those committees. I don't think we should, frankly. I think it's a little bit intimidating to the people that do serve on the committees, 'cause they don't feel like they're on an equal footing with everybody. So I personally would rather let the group of individuals that end up on this committee, let them handle it, and then let them come back, obviously with the assistance of our staff, and I think they'll probably need both Dave and Mark. There's a lot of things that have come up in the course of this discussion. Sidewalks, no sidewalks. And I already discussed that with both Mark and Dave and said, "I think that people, there's probably a lot of people that live in the historic district that don't realize just how, why the city's easement is down there, and they don't understand that there's gonna be some major changes if it's decided to attempt to move forward with the sidewalks." And I know, and Steve knows, and Andy knows, and Ernie knows, that that whole sidewalk issue has gone back and forth and back and forth. It's been like a volleyball game for the last 30 years. And so I think there needs to be some reminders of the pluses and minuses. And I think I also wanna remind people that, you know, my neighborhood, I live a little bit east of here, in a subdivision that was built in the early 80s, I don't have sidewalks either. Ernie doesn't have sidewalks. Most of American River Canyon doesn't have south, south, anyway, doesn't have sidewalks, and I don't know about north. So I think everybody is making a lot of assumptions about what exists in other parts of the town outside the district, and that may not be accurate. With regard to the makeup of the district, excuse me, the committee, I personally think there needs to be representations from the business community, from the merchants in the district, from the residents that live within the historic district, and I mean the historic district on both sides of Natomah Street. And I also think that there needs to be an element of that committee that is made up of people that do not live in the historic district and also are not business owners in the district. That Sutter Street area is vital to the entire community. All of us, at some point, go to eat on Sutter Street, go to shop down there, go to an event down there, and the same thing happens. I live around the corner from the park. Probably everybody that's got school-aged children in Folsom has spent some amount of time in my neighborhood at Mitchell Park or at Blanchett School or anywhere else. And I think we need to have some involvement from everyone. And I think the other thing that having non-historic district residents on that ad hoc committee does is it's one other way to get people that live in my neighborhood, or Steve's neighborhood, or Andy's neighborhood, or Roger's neighborhood, wherever it is, to say, "Hey, reminder, people, there's a parking structure down there. You might wanna use it. You know, would you like to have somebody parked in front of your house all day?" I just think that there needs to be some balance, and I would propose it's gotta be an odd number. I think it should probably be something in the neighborhood of 21 people. That's just my thought process on it. And I think they need, you know, maybe we try to schedule it so they can initially meet twice a month, if that's convenient for the membership of the ad hoc committee as well as our staff.
Okay. Roger?
And I think Pam should be involved as well, from a community development standpoint.
I was gonna add that I think Pam should be involved in that aspect. I agree with having an odd number and a variance of others, like outside of the district as well as inside. I think the sidewalk issue is, you know, with other neighborhoods, don't have sidewalks, but with other neighborhoods, you don't have the traffic impact you have in Old Town, and that's a big consideration. I would actually like to see a council member on the board, or on the committee, I apologize, only because I feel like, I feel like it would give a more accountability on bringing it back sooner and having those milestones and objectives and some tangible, you know, markers to say, "Here's where we are, here's what we're doing." And, you know, almost like all the other regional boards we sit on, we come back and report it to our council members, and it gives a little more ownership for us. But those are kind of the points. I agree with everything that was set up here, though, especially with Ernie's remarks on bringing it back a lot sooner and figuring out a strategy around this, so.
I would disagree with the, having a council member on there brings it forward faster.
Thoughts, Andy?
Yeah, so this is, since this is something that'll be occurring, looks like certainly mostly next year, I don't really care a whole lot. No, I do, I'm all joking, is all.
I nominate Andy for the committee.
You know, I think one way, I can't remember the exact process we went through when we did the historic district revitalization, and I know that was kind of a smaller area, you know, it was just the business district down there, but that was a big, monstrous project, and I can't remember exactly, you know, how we worked through, you know, all the concerns. And that was primarily business owners, but it certainly impacted residents as well. But maybe go back and look at a few examples of success we've had with ad hoc committees. I really don't think we need council representation, and for this reason, is that if this moves as quickly as I'm hearing we would all like, it's gonna be back in front of us very quickly. And it is an iterative process. So I feel that, you know, the council during this process, you know, will have a tremendous amount of involvement, just as, you know, reports come back to the council and then readdress certain things. But, you know, I, these things either work tremendously or fail miserably. And, you know, the old saying, "Kill it by committee," and none of us want that to happen. So it's important this gets built right. There's certainly a tremendous amount of interest up here at the council, because we've all been hearing this for a long time, and there are some solutions. And I appreciated the staff report last time, you know, as far as, you know, looking at all sorts of, you know, alternatives and options related to parking, and whether it's permitted or timed, and things like that. And, you know, ideas change over time and whatnot, so it'll be interesting to get the pulse of the residents down there once again and whatnot. So this, I feel strongly, this'll be a really good exercise and get some benefit out of it.
Just one other reminder that we're gonna need to dust off that, the previous parking lot study.
So, first of all, as far as the historic district, just pull out the map. We used to use the whole boundaries of the historic district, so, I mean, it goes quite a ways, even, like you said, south of Natomah. So whatever historic district map is, at a minimum, those people all have to be notified, as well as all the property owners and the tenants within those buildings on Sutter Street. If we just do the property owners, you're missing probably 90% of the actual businesses in the historic district, because they're usually one, and they're not one of the same, if you will. I do like a lot of Ernie's suggestions, because it's very similar to what we did when we did the turntable, when we did the revitalization, when we did the light rail station. I can go back when we did the historic district master plan. And thank you, Pam, 'cause you took that over when it was just floundered. That's when you and I first got involved with Cindy Dow, and we took a process that was flailing, condensed it down to you and I, Cindy Dow, and a few residents, and we got it accomplished with public hearings within about six months or less of a process that had been stalling for darnier three years. So I think Pam is probably one of the better historical knowledges of a lot of stuff we've done in the past with that as well. I think the success is-
That's what you get for coming back, Pam.
She's a rock star, trust me. But I think the process is that I'd like to see is, again, a committee set up with not council members, and I hear Roger's comment, and it has a lot of merit to it. What I also see as a detriment is some people feel that the council members are steering their decision, which also bothers me, because now with the tightness of the Brown Act and tightness of the Open Meeting Law Act, I'd hate to have any one of us potentially be accused of steering and then have to try to force an issue over recusal or not. I'd like the people to speak freely, and then that's the job of the five of you, whoever you are up here, to deliberate and then, you know, interject. The other thing I was gonna say, and I like all of our ideas and suggestions, I always said, "We don't need to win the battle. If we're winning wars, as soon as you come to a decision on one of them, bring it forward." That's why I like your suggestion, Dave, you know, not to exceed one year, because it leaves an open slate, that if you have an agreement on something right away, bam, bring it back to the city council.
I think the charter may prohibit going past a year.
Can't go past a year, anyway, 'cause of the charter, but I agree. But my point being is, he's leaving it open, so that way, it doesn't, you don't have to wait for all decisions to be made one time. If you've got a success right now, bring it forward right away. Let the city council deliberate, let the city manager and the staff, you know, give their input at that time. You know, we tasked Kerry Miller, and I know with Everett Palmer, and Ernie was here as well, to basically look at the composition, put the people together, as Andy said, especially the revitalization, that was a beast. Between Kerry Miller and Everett Palmer, I'm surprised he didn't run from the building screaming. The business owners, residents alike throughout the community have emailed me a bunch, all wanting to participate. So, you know, you're gonna need a lead on who actually selects these folks. I think the representation that we've all discussed, and I appreciated the vice mayor actually laying out almost exactly what I was gonna consider, and I think we're all on the same page. I'd rather have you guys do that, because, yeah, you gotta keep it a manageable meeting. If we get into, you know, the circle where it's not going anywhere, then I think it's incumbent upon the staff people representative of the committee to bring back to the city council the city manager for saying, "Now, wait a minute, then we have to step involved." And I agree with you, Roger, that's when the city council then needs to step in and break the logjam and take it away from there, but I'll let you guys decide, 'cause-
Well, at the end of the day, the council's gonna make the decision anyway.
No, I agree, but I mean, sometimes if you need someone, you know, some assistance to break a logjam, we have to step in just for some guidance that can either come from the city manager or city council. I'll let the five of you decide when Andy or I are gone and sitting on the outside laughing. But anyway, I think the citizens have a good idea. I agree with the sidewalk issue, and I agree with you, Roger, there's a lot of non-traffic issues where some of them have sidewalks and some don't. I think the biggest eye-opener's gonna be, as we've fought the battles many times, us against them, and we sit there as referees, is that when they realize that the easement could take out their landscaping, their current parking, and, you know, they're not gonna be real happy if they, and that's where we always got into discussion. "I don't wanna sidewalk, 'cause I'm gonna lose my landscape, I'm gonna lose my new RV parking and whatever."
And I don't get to park my car perpendicular to the street if I do that.
So I think, again, frank discussion by all the people that have been involved, and I'll just let you guys decide, you know, from that point on. You know, if you need to jump in, I think that's the five, and I let you guys in the new council decide that.
And I think it would also be helpful if they were, if the meetings, if the, the agenda should be published so that people have the general idea of what the subject matter's gonna be on any given night or day, whenever these meetings are gonna take place, so that if members of the public are interested in a few of the elements, but not all of them, that they have the opportunity to go and at least observe and make comments, should they choose to do that.
And I'd also suggest, you know, just for a sounding board, because that's why we have Historic District Commission, that some of the little victories are coming, maybe run through them, because at the end of the day, we usually task them with a lot of decisions that get recommended to the city council. And I think that might be one as well, to follow the process we do with parks, we do with Public Works, you know, with the utility ad hoc committee and stuff like that. I think that would be the appropriate place to take the first decision points from the committee and actually go to HDC.
I agree, because there's things like the sidewalks and a lot of other things that are, that basically, those are things that the Historic District Commission has typically overseen.
Looked at many, many years, so I think the vice mayor had a couple comments.
And they understand the ramifications of it.
I'm not here to throw rocks at anybody, but I think we'll review, I hope, our new commissioner of council with the HDC role, okay? You sound like you're completely satisfied. I am not.
Satisfied with what?
With the performance of the HDC.
I'd still like to get their input.
Should go with what we already suggested a long time ago.
But that's another, another part of this, okay? But as far as letting staff make the decisions on some of this, I don't buy it. I have the highest respect for staff. We have the best staff probably anywhere in any council, anywhere around. But we get paid and we get elected to make these decisions. And when you talk about sidewalks in some of the areas of Old Town, you're talking about safety.
Ernie, I was not suggesting that staff make the decision, I just want them to give the information. I think all the decisions should be made by the council.
I have no problem.
Okay.
I'm not downing staff, I'm just saying that we need to sit together before we involve staff and resolve these sort of things.
Staff I look at as the facilitators, providing of information.
Yeah, we'd be a resource to, you know, educate them as to the right of way down there, and what the pedestrian master plan says, and bike routes, and all the background history that we've helped.
And my only comment versus a council member and non-council, we will be picking some people that are very, can be overwhelming, okay, and can intimidate other members of the committee, just by the nature of the beast. I don't think you're gonna intimidate any council member, okay? Because our charter is not to be intimidated, to serve this whole city.
I don't want anybody thinking that they're gonna get on that committee to intimidate anybody.
Okay, well.
That's what I want to avoid.
Yeah, so I would say if that occurs at the earliest opportunity, that person is set aside and have a conversation. And then I think what I would hope from staff, which I'm pretty confident they would, bring it to council's direction, and/or would just give them authority to say, "You know what? You're more of a detriment to a positive of this committee," and ask them to leave.
But I think I do believe-
You know, and that frankly happened with some of the affordable housing discussions.
I know.
Yeah, I agree with you, Ernie.
Well, you had about 50 when you did the affordable housing, you had a big-
That was, yeah, that was a big number.
Tremendous group.
Well, there's a lot of neighborhoods-
So all I'm saying is, I think we need to talk a little bit more, and it can be open session, I have no problem with that.
I don't, I, honestly, Ernie, I think that staff has probably heard me talk about the sidewalks and you talk about things that you're interested in, and I have no problem if we do that, but I don't want us to set the agenda. I want the merchants and the residents to have a discussion about the things that they think that they're upset about. I don't want us to tell the committee what they should be talking about. I want them to bring that up to staff, get the responses to the questions they need, and then come forward to us with the recommendations. And honestly, I'd like to get updated, I'd like the council to be updated, you know, with just a snippet, a one-minute summary of this is what we talked about last month or at the last meeting, or whatever it is, so that we're aware of what's going on as the whole thing moves forward.
Yeah, and what we could do, you know, it just popped in my head, you know-
Not to mention the fact we're gonna get emails.
... city council perspective, not only give the direction of the composition and how we want the committee to run, but it's within our authority up here this evening even to say, "Let's appoint an ad hoc committee of two council members to be the liaisons between the committee,"
Exactly.
"and before it comes here," similar to what we did with the two-by-twos for South of 50.
I'm not interested in that, but that's okay.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying they would get involved, they would receive input from the staff and see if there's any clarification, see if there's any issues, in other words, as needed. That's just one thought.
I'd like to see all the council members get that.
I agree with you, Steve, because where I come from, as council persons, we are responsible, make the hard calls. And I'm not gonna be, as one council member, be overwhelmed by somebody that has a real personal interest that is not beneficial to the whole. And if you say that's not gonna happen on committees, you're not, you're not being honest to yourself.
No.
Well, I'm not advocating council members to be on the committee.
No.
I'm saying if there's an issue, similar to what we've done before, when there's been an issue, like when we were creating a master plan for South of 50, we've had ad hoc committees for other reasons, the two-by-twos with the school district as an example, those things are vetted out, and direction is given to the staff to go back to the committee. It's not for any decision points whatsoever.
And frankly-
It's just a thought to think about, you guys can add it on later if you wish.
And frankly, if you get 21 people or so sitting on the committee, I wanna see who the person is that's gonna intimidate 20 people. There's gonna be a ton of personalities, like we've had on all of these committees that have been formulated over the time that I've been sitting here.
And I'm not afraid of-
And I don't frankly wanna filter. I don't want there to be, I don't want, you know, Dave and Pam and Mark to work with the committee, then have that information filtered by a council member. I want them to bring the information to the entire council, so that the entire council is responsible for making the decision without an additional political lens being put into the picture.
I agree with the mayor, that's where I was going to, was more of a two-by-two basis as for the committee, but, I mean, that's just, I, I agree with that position.
Well, I, I think we have some homework to do within the next two months, to be sure we give staff the bureau guidance and we resolve our differences, okay? Because I'm not gonna defer to what was in the past, didn't work and won't work today. I don't buy that theory whatsoever, okay? So I, I, I'd like to have a more-
I didn't say that, Ernie. All I said was that we typically haven't had a council member involved in those, and we got to resolution on the affordable housing, the, the turntable, the redevelopment of the historic district. On any, the, the historic district master plan, there's been a lot of circumstances that we've gone through, we've reached resolution, and we've not had council members involved. I have no problem if a council member has time or wants to go to the meeting, just like any member of the public. I just don't want them directing what the committee's doing. I want the, the residents to do that and come back with their recommendations, and I don't want there to be a political filter between the committee and the city council that will ultimately make the decision.
Well, I didn't think, I have never even thought of anything political. This is not political. This is just management and style and responsibility. As one councilman, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna be responsible for, example, you talk about sidewalks. I seen moms push a, 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 a car carriage down Sibley. I swear to God, they're gonna get killed someday, and I don't wanna be responsible for that because I didn't take an action to do it. If somebody on the end of Sibley doesn't want a sidewalk, tough luck. If it, if it protects a family and a mom and a baby from not getting hit by a car, and they speed like crazy down that road, okay? So all I'm saying is-
They speed, they speeded my neighborhood, a car got totaled in my driveway last Sunday.
Let's, let's pull on a second here.
That happens everywhere, unfortunately.
The good news is, to Ernie's concerns, you guys will be making all the decisions. So the committee's gonna obviously talk about issues, and if there's an impasse, again, on sidewalks, as it's been for the last ten, fifteen years, this, the, the current city council will make whatever decisions they feel necessary. So ultimately, yeah, you will have that power to make that decision. The, the committee is only a recommendation body to the, to the city council, and/or if you guys decide you wanna go through the HDC first and let them vet it out. If you wanna come straight to the city council, let's just make that, that clear this evening, and come directly from the committee, you guys, that's fine with me too.
And I think it would be, you know, it would be up to us as staff, you know, helping as a resource to keep it on topic, that this is a parking solutions ad hoc committee, not necessarily a sidewalk committee. However, there is a, you know, a correlation between the two, but we, we wanted to kinda stray off to focus on sidewalks.
I believe I differ with you, David, and I don't very often. I think this is a quality of life issue, involving parking, sidewalks, all kinds of stuff. So when, if we're gonna tackle this, let's do it right and, and encompass everything. And, and I'm, there's a lot of good people down there, both in business and in residence. I, I'm not afraid of, have to be there to, to lead the, the crowd, I don't mean that. They, they can, they're capable. I'm saying it's our job to be sure the safety aspect of this town and that area in particular, we take care of it.
Yeah, I, I have to agree with the vice mayor, and again, it's, it's not any slam the way the, the thing was, you know, sitting here, but, you know, my intention was to talk about everything, because again, if we're gonna put a committee together and has a composition of what we're talking about, representation of the city residents, businesses, et cetera, we're talking about, let's just do this one time.
Hundred percent.
You know, we, we've had it before, as you remember, we had it when we had a very clear discussion. The other thing we can dust off is all the approvals we'd already previously made before they yanked the redevelopment money out from underneath us. Let's revisit that and know what we've already approved as a city council. That might shorten a lot of the conversation. Now it just becomes a matter of funding, number one. Number two, because we have everybody, and I agree with, with the vice mayor, and I think we've all had some concerns that we're having, in my opinion, too many functions in the, in the historic district. I will never, ever support taking away any street fairs, they've been here longer than I have. But I think, you know, some of the events that are going on down there need to be cut back and allow a settling of that, because they just get, every time you turn on, there's something once a month down there that's, you know, very disruptive to the residents and the merchants, quite frankly. A lot of merchants don't benefit from some of these things that are going on. That's a discussion the committee needs to have, and certainly the council after we're gone, to make those decisions, but that was one thing. So I was looking for everything to be talked about, because you got a good group, you got good representation. I agree, the parking and sidewalks could go hand-in-hand, but let's find out what's on their mind, like Kerry said, let them tell us what's on their mind. And then I'll, you know, then defer to staff to be able to steer the, you know, the questions into a very concise conversation, to hopefully find out some solutions.
And to your last point, I'd like it to come to the council first, not the HDC.
Yeah, I, I, you know, as I more think about it, I think it should come directly to the city council, like we've done with the other committees.
Then, then I would suggest that we invite the people that are serving on the HDC to attend those meetings, not necessarily, not be on the committee. I think that would be a bad idea, but I'd like to make sure that they are aware of what's going on and what's coming forward.
Offer to them, absolutely, just like council members consent, make sure it's not more than three of us.
Right, and, and then, well, actually, there can be, as long as we don't participate in the discussion.
That's true, as long as, you're right, you're right.
Hearing it is one thing, participating is another. And, you know, and I think making sure that the, the members of the Historic District Commission that choose to get involved in that, they too have our phone numbers and emails and will let us know if they strongly support something or strongly don't support it.
So, it's your guys' pleasure to see you.
Well, I'm about out of peppermints to keep me from coughing, but, so, so the, is, are we deciding, are we deciding the makeup? Not tonight, right?
I think it's pushing the-
We're just, I think we're agreeing that we want an ad hoc committee-
Okay, and, and then-
I'd, I'd like to see twenty-one people on it, and I'd like to see people submit applications.
We need more talk.
Yeah, we need more due diligence to-
So, so, so at a future council meeting, then, the, the specific makeup of this, and, and maybe some of the assumed content of what's discussed then will be figured out?
And that, and actually, that's kinda where I was leaning, quite honestly, I was gonna make a motion to continue off calendar, allows the opportunity for us to get out to the community, all the stuff that you just said, Kerry, is, hey, we're looking at these different people, this different, this so-and-so for. It also gives time, as different things come up, for the council to discuss some of those as they're going out, and, and, you know, put-
We'd like to see it come back after the new council takes seat, too.
Well, that's why I said off calendar, so I'm assuming, I'm assuming, because we only have one more meeting, I'm sorry, yeah, off calendar, meaning that way you guys can bring it back whenever you're ready.
That'd be good.
And I would suggest probably-
I know we don't have room for the next agenda.
Probably January is a good timeframe, that first meeting in January.
We can do that, yeah.
Yeah, after the holiday.
So we can, we'll come back with a future item that, do you want us to actually propose a list of, you know, we'll come up with proposed categories, and then, you know, a proposed list of twenty-one or so people that we believe fit into those categories for you to react to, or what's your pleasure?
I would, I would come back with, based on experience with other, with other ad hoc committees, what size would be appropriate, how we break up the membership, and then I would say we basically have people apply, because we, we don't know who's even interested in this.
Other than emails have been forwarded to the city manager.
Right, and frankly, I'm shocked that there's not more historic district residents in the room tonight.
We've had about eight people who've expressed interest so far.
Okay, I'm just surprised that they're not here tonight.
Guys, we're okay, Alexa, I made a motion to continue off calendar, you got a second? That way, I think it leaves it wide open, it allows us the opportunity to reach out to the public, reaches, like with Elaine and her staff, and get, bring it back to you guys, to kinda look at the composition, take it a step further, including, you know, how often they're gonna meet, what time of day they're gonna meet, you know, sensitivity of, of evenings that either we have a committee or commission going on, so be sensitive to that calendar as well. So unless there's-
You know, and frankly, it might even be, depending upon the makeup of that committee, that you might wanna do one meeting during the day, and then the next meeting at night to accommodate people, depending upon, you know, because there's some people that can't do it at night, and other people that can't do it during the day.
Mr. Mayor?
Exactly.
If I may, one point I wanted to add to that, this is completely like side topic, but there, one of the, one of the, it's a big issue, though, is the deliveries, commercial deliveries. If there's a way to incorporate some of those folks, to see if that can, those schedules can be, you know, manipulated and put into this as well, because that's the delivery trucks parking side by side that causes a big issue after a certain time.
Yeah.
So I'd like to just, I just wanna make that's a note on there.
It, it's a good consideration, but I know, based on friends that I have that are in the restaurant industry, if Cisco says, "Come in Tuesday at eleven o'clock," Cisco's "Come in Tuesday at eleven o'clock."
Yeah.
And they don't care if the beer truck's gonna show up at the same time.
We could offer different locations for certain types of deliveries, too.
That's what I'm saying, if we can incorporate that and lean on a little bit of pressure on it and saying, "Hey, these are, these are the policies we need to establish down there," then I don't care what Cisco says.
So I think after you guys have the structured commentary, you can have the guideline commentary, and at that point in time, then down the line, you can obviously start appointing your members. So I think, it won't be Andy and I, because we'll be in the back laughing.
I'd like to see it in January, though, so that we don't put this off too far.
So, I left it on calendar, and you guys can decide in December when you wanna back. So, if that works for everybody, I, I got a motion, do I have a second on that? That's right, Councilman Gaylord, call roll.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
And Nicholas?
Yes. Okay, next item?
Next item is city manager reports.
Oh.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to thank all of the city personnel that are involved with helping the, all those victims affected by the campfire up north. We've had a steady stream of strike teams from our fire department, we've had at least six personnel plus two dispatchers being rotated from the police department. We have our CERT team, and also countless folks back here backing up those individuals and making sure that services are running smoothly here and with our mutual aid partners across our borders. Very grateful. Also, we're accepting applications right now for our city commissions and committees, which is a great way to get involved in Folsom. There are a variety of opportunities that are posted on our website, and applications are due November twenty-sixth. Beginning November eleventh, you'll see right out front here on Natoma, we're going to have overnight closures on East Natoma to make way for PG&E work that is related to the Oak Parkway Trail Bike Pedestrian Undercrossings. And those cross, closures will be at nighttime again on East Natoma between Fargo and Prison Road, between eight PM and four AM, Sunday through Thursday. There will be very clear, clear detour signs through December twenty-first. And then finally, my favorite event, one of my favorite events, Folsom Zoo Sanctuary is hosting its Thanksgiving Feast for the Animals. So join us on Thursday, November twenty-second, which is Thanksgiving Day at eleven AM. Regular admission fees do apply, and you can visit our website to learn more about this fun event. And that's it.
Roger?
Yeah, I will say Happy Veterans Day and, and thank all of our veterans for their service. I know we had our parade canceled, but I think it was a really good decision the staff made, so thank you for looking out for the best interest. Thank you to Folsom Fire, Folsom PD, and our CERT team for, for all the efforts you're doing and, and the support you're giving up to the campfire. I have a post to share with you with about a thousand Folsom residents who thank you as well, so thank you for that. Was able to, or congratulations to now Eagle Scout Nicholas Messiah, I gave him his proclamation on Saturday, I wasn't able to make, I wasn't supposed to go, and then I was able to make it, so it was good to see. And I think that is it. Thank you.
Andy, I'll make it quick, since you only have one peppermint left.
Yep, I was hoping we'd get done before eight, so I could get past that road closure getting home, but didn't happen. But, but anyway, just ditto with what Roger just shared with the community, and with that, I'll say good evening.
Kerry?
Happy Veterans Day. Happy Veterans Day, Happy Thanksgiving, Happy Thanksgiving to the animals. A reminder that the tree lighting is coming up, and I don't remember the date on the-
November thirtieth.
On the thirtieth. The ice skating rink is open. Thank you to everybody who supported me during this election cycle, and looking forward to working with, with Sarah and Mike, and Andy, excuse me, and Ernie and Roger, and for the next couple of years. Otherwise, drive really carefully. Andy and I will have to drive really, really carefully, because the roads closed for us to get home. But please, I've, I've seen more cars than I care to see running stop signs and red lights, and it's dark earlier, it's supposed to start raining sometime in the next week, in which case the roads are gonna be slippery, so please drive like the police department is behind you. With that, good night.
Mr. Vice Mayor, since I forgot you last meeting.
I'm supposed to fill in for him, but he just ignores me, you know?
Okay, so thank you, Ernie. Just kidding.
Well, first of all, let me thank all the people that did work hard to, to prepare for the Veterans Parade. And I guess we can say we're lucky, because in eighteen years, it's the first time we had a cancellation. And that's, that's a pretty good streak, everything comes to an end sometime. Today, I delivered two sets of flowers to the ladies that would've got them on Veterans Day, the, the widow of the founder of the, of the parade, and also the lady of the grand marshal. So they got their flowers, so that wasn't there. Now I'm dealing with twenty-two hundred hot dogs.
No, I already hosed the twenty-two hundred of those, so you only get two thousand left.
Yeah, she's taking care of two, and, and we're working on it. You'd think that's easy. You know, we, we always ran out of food on, on the, on the Veterans Day, but when there is no Veterans Day, you got everything bought. But we got a bunch of nonprofits, a bunch of need in town, and we're gonna get those hot dogs to the right people. Those hot dogs are not gonna be spoiled, I can guarantee you. So, and then finally, on Friday, Folsom High plays a semifinal game, barring the weather, they're looking at the, the smoke, making them postpone, I hope not.